All right, bring this meeting of the Public Works Authority to that order. First item, we didn't approve or reject Public Works Authority's orders. Do we have any purpose orders for Public Works?
Yes.
Little.
Not so far before you even find stuff. Good work, good practice.
Another foot makes a break in the line. Just go another one, we have a break in line just a park, fix a break, almost three hundred dollars.
Do they keep that part like that on?
Yes, yes.
Over here?
Yeah, it's over here, we saw one here.
Okay.
And this was a eight sixty, echo. I don't know if it's on the eyes, it's four dollar, that's a huge eye. It's on the spreader eyes, we need to clarify what the eyes is actually meaning for.
Hey, how much would an eye cost you?
Five hundred.
You can buy them all, they'll be a lot.
You can buy a small one?
Buy the little ones too.
Two hundred, around two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and it'll produce up behind, you know.
We have to have the three nine hundred dollars, forty nine, sixty seven, sixty six, part for public works. Minor kind of money to where the public works parks. I guess I made a mistake, I made a mistake.
Okay.
Yes. Any other discussion?
Oh, any discussion?
Go.
Bailey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Public Works, for Public Works. And to let you know too, we discussed that a little bit, we're gonna try to get the final approval this week to go ahead and do the project, to do the coronation injection system that we authorized for thirty thousand dollars. And what it'll do, we think one of the reasons we're failing the test is that when we put our water in this tank and run that chlorine into that tank, it sits there and generates what we call the T A T amps. And that's the effect, the byproducts, disaffected byproducts. So what we're doing is we're gonna change injection point here and have the distribution line coming into town, so we're putting less chlorine into this tank and part of it over here in the line. And that distributes the chlorine in a way that it doesn't have the opportunity to build up these disaffected byproducts and we fail our tests. We think this will give us a hundred percent compliance. Like we said last month, I think we best are being told by point one part, point one part.
Is that why the E Q had like three hundred fifty dollars a month, whatever, then all of a sudden there was seven thousand?
Seven thousand is that certification that we have to do every year, no matter what. And we're basically paying them to police us. That's basically what goes down. And so, that's what, that's going on with the water system. It is getting better. And the sad thing about it, even once we get in compliance, we have to be in compliance six months before it can be said we're compliant. Because they average three quarters together. And so we have to go two quarters of compliance to be considered compliant. But we're getting, we're almost there.
So what, do we get to save some money if we get compliant?
Well, I don't know if we save any money, but what we've done to get into compliance is actually save this money because we look great as plants, the point was more efficient. And so, kind of yes, I don't know. Any other Public Works? All right. Item number three, discussion action on changing the pay period. I'm making a mistake in that. We changed the pay period for paid employees on the fifteenth, the last day of the month, with check to be distributed the following day.
How does this benefit us?
You know, I did a survey with my all the employees and they really decided about getting paid twice. There might be more to do than that.
Oh, I see, right now they're just doing monthly, oh, okay.
Well, the thing is, we could not do, we should not have been doing it monthly, in the middle of the month, is that correct?
Right.
So we had to change to either the last day of the month or do it semi-monthly. So, as it's talked to all the employees, majority seem to like being paid twice.
I think it's better they pay twice.
Any further discussion? We'll take a look.
Bailey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Right.
Item number four, discussion action on longevity pay. I make a motion to change the longevity pay to read this follows. To follow the longevity pay scale currently in existence up to the fifth year and cap longevity five hundred and that point forward.
So that's what it has.
Now, now it's twenty five.
Twenty two to five, five.
Oh, yes, and ten, to be paid at the, go ahead.
So, change, you're making a motion to change the longevity. Follow the piece go up to the fifth year and then cap at the fifth year.
At five hundred dollars.
At five hundred dollars, okay.
To be paid.
To be paid.
At the end of fiscal year. If funds are available. Any discussions?
So you, CJ, since you wasn't here, the town, I called like four or five other surrounding towns and none of them, but one had longevity.
And that was photo.
Yes. And they even did, they counted at seven hundred, a guy that's been there twenty something years, but they paid him twenty seven dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Partner?
Yes.
Webb?
Item number five, action discussion on budget.
Hey, before you jump off of that one, I talked to my son, I know that this just come in. I thought my son, he's a parent at the Goucher, they don't have much.
And everything.
Okay, let me get our move for Public Works.
If you have a look at that one sheet that has down here, C P W A down here, shows the P W A over the year in red.
Last month.
What's in front of there?
That's, I'm looking for this one, that's Public Works.
Yeah, I was just wanting to know before that. This is what I was talking about.
Oh, the negative?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, when you look at Public Works, just to go briefly with everybody, it starts out with administrative personnel services, twenty seven thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars is what we spent this year. I'm reckoning now, these guys broke down a wonderful job, that what we spend each one of our categories, each one of our departments within Public Works, and it was down off of. And this is what was spent this last fiscal year in each one of these areas. So administrative personnel services, twenty seven, six eighty-four, I'm gonna round it up or down. Administrative maintenance and operations, five hundred and forty-three thousand seventy-seven dollars. And that includes all kinds of stuff. Water treatment personnel services, which is basically your unemployment, is two hundred dollars. Water treatment, maintenance and operations was a hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. The water distribution personnel service, which is unemployment, is three hundred. Water distribution, maintenance and operations, which is fixing water lines, sewer lines, stuff like that, was nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Sewer personnel services, work for unemployment for employees, three hundred there. Sewer maintenance and operations was thirty-nine thousand one hundred and six dollars. For totals expenditure for accounts payable, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And plus being on top of that personnel cost was two hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For total expenditure this last fiscal year, a one million sixteen thousand sixty-four dollars.
That sounds like a lot.
It is a lot.
How much did it take in?
Well, we took in, as we started, we took in one, I guess we took in a hundred, one million one hundred and fourteen thousand seven eighty-eight. But we started out the year eighteen thousand and negative. Or, actually, we, we started out the year six thousand in the negative. And so, we started out the year in the negative. So right now, we got fifteen thousand sitting in our account, which is not much.
Yeah, but that's after transferring money from the water department to the city.
Yes, that includes.
That includes everything, that includes everything, that includes, yeah, all expenditures, that includes everything.
So, like I said back, like we were discussing before, it is our obligation as a board and a town to evaluate where we're spending money, place areas we can cut costs, and places that we know are going to increase expenditure for this coming fiscal year. Now, some of y'all have been to last meetings, and y'all remember that we discussed the fact that we only had budgeted seventy-one thousand dollars for chemicals for the water plant, and we already spent forty something thousand, we actually got a budget done. And so, I remember, I think Renee and I both didn't know, and it's budgeting ahead of time anyway. Just to let you know, what we spent on chemicals this year was a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Yeah, thirty something, thirty.
Okay, but are those chemicals, are they competitively sold by different companies?
Yeah, there are not too many people who do, we check prices and actually we're, we air chemical costs to treat the water, and we're treating it cheaper than we are.
Yeah, not about the chemicals that you.
Yeah, that includes that chemical cost. And we've prepared the costs saved for the caustic, and we've prepared for the alcohol, the A C A, the urea, alum fluoride, flavor, and we've compared the dosum for manate and some other chemicals.
We're getting better at.
We're getting better prices and we're using less chemicals.
And less things over watching.
Good, right.
Yay. And I got with Phillip, and he called, there's too many companies that I know, he was checking prices on, we've got them.
That's smart.
He knows we want.
I would like to know, at what point do you allow the supervisors to come in to scrutinize the budget and tell you what they need?
That's right, we talked about that in previous meeting, everyone's department head is getting a copy of what their department.
Proposed budget.
Well, not as a proposal, but what they spent this year.
Okay.
We're letting them see this right now, the place department will know exactly what they spent this year and where they spent it. The fire department, we've already set down the fire department, you have their fee, go on how much they spent, what they think they might need, what might not be expenditure this year, different things, let them look at what they see, the needs to bump or increase, okay? Same way with key, same way with water, when we're doing that with all the departments, and giving our department head the opportunity to be part of this, we want a partner. Because the process from this point forward is gonna be that you don't go to school buy something. This budget is gonna be focused on, gonna be, I don't wanna say this, adhered to.
Yes, because of purpose orders.
And they're not gonna go buy something without coming in here first and getting a purpose order first. Now, they like it purpose orders for some things that we know are recurring costs. But, and even in that case, they have to get, look at the budget to see where they're at. And anytime during the process, that they're saying they're looking at, say, office supplies, and they're hoping to spend two hundred and thirteen dollars, we establish what's in the budget, and if there's not two hundred and thirteen, and that budget's taken on by, period. It has to come for the board, at which point we say yes or no, and if we say yes, we have to move money from one area into that line of, gotta do this.
And if the ticket comes in that does a purpose order, back to back to their purpose order number, we're gonna have to discuss who, where, and why.
One thing that Donnie, when I first got on, we began here in Florida, City Hall, we got a lot of buildings out here that has, I guarantee it, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in pipes and equipment that's brand new that you wouldn't even know we have unless you get it up two by four or piece of carpet. And so, when the thing goes out, we'll be buying things, so that's one thing that we're gonna work on as far as getting some of this stuff for you. But there's a lot of stuff.
Yep, thanks, thanks.
Well, we never had an inventory, we raised that before in these meetings, where nobody ever counted our nuts and bolts to see how many we had of anything, you know, and.
Because they usually go down and pick one up if they didn't really want, if they were planning to put it down.
If the supervisors are gonna be sitting down with you and going over the line of the budget items, and if they're aware of that, and then they're aware of how much they're paying off over here, we should be able to have a budget.
And not have to run one of the, say, that by this.
No, that's right.
You know, we're not here to look at everything they do, we're just here to make sure that it's being managed in the best possible way.
What are we buying at Rock and H that costs three thousand five hundred and fifty-three, it says ice and water here.
Okay, let me explain that to you, what's that, and here's an exciting thing, guys. These, Don, actually with Joanne's property, has done a wonderful job of giving us the paperwork that we've been asking for for a long time, on how to document what's going on. So what item, what item is it, what's the number on the list?
Twenty-eight hundred six, dash six ten. Twenty-eight hundred dash six ten, that's your cost count, I mean, that's your.
Yeah, that's summary, he's gonna tell you the details of what next to go with that.
I can go to the detail here and look under twenty-eight, six hundred, and see what every expenditure was for the year under that line item. Okay, now when you see Rock and H, that's only the first one on that list. So it's not just Rock and H, they're being that supplying here, they're actually taking here, yeah. They're breaking here, and some of these, you know.
You just got a summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just got a summary.
Yeah, so it's not all, it's not all Rock and H, he's the first one on that particular lineup. So you can see through the year what has actually been spent and where it's been spent.
Yeah, those are listed as general supplies under that category, this is your reference number for that, right?
Yeah, so we just had the meeting, and Rock and H was the first vendor in that category, that's what shows it up.
Well, this is way better.
Yeah, this one is Rock and H.
We asked the same question.
Yeah, yeah.
He uses the mod of ice at the water plant.
Yeah, right.
In his water, and he just smokes there, gets a lot of that.
But that's not the total of three thousand.
But it is not, that.
No.
Three thousand.
You know, that's other supply and stuff in that category too.
All right.
And if you look at the very top of your deal, you'll see that we spent, how many thousands in administrative personnel services?
That's ten.
Uh, ten? Twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-four on the front page. And we're finding out that's good where the workers come, all down there, and we're breaking it down and trying to identify exactly wherever it goes.
The coach, that's where it had said, was just kinda here, there, and over, and some things I put in codes that didn't really apply to that code, but that's where they're at, and that's why we have to leave them.
Misleading.
Misleading.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get some into detail now, or you're just gonna go by.
Well, no, that's good, yeah.
So things are really looking good, and what we're gonna be doing now, to let everybody know again, we're just, tonight, we're just bringing this to word, bringing it out in the open. We're in the process of discussing and tweaking and looking at ways to establish this budget. On our regular basis, July the eleventh, we'll have a little more detail on the budget, and then probably have one more meeting to approve the budget moving forward.
How about electronic billing?
We're gonna be looking at some of that. In fact, we've discussed, what we may do is maybe a section capital outlay was the thing. If we got money to do it, we can, we don't, we don't. But a capital outlay doesn't mean you're gonna spend it, you know, so we may try to find an area where we can do some capital outlay. One thing we've talked about, and I already brought up this to get the idea out there, is electronic meter, tails on, or whatever, I don't know exactly what you call it. But instead of writing down every meter, when you go out and bring a meter, you have a device that you can punch in the meter number. Once you get to City Hall, your buddy in the computer, boom.
Down there, yeah.
Download it. Well, it's not like electric, because they can read theirs through satellite. And we're not for that, we could do that if we had the money, but we don't have that type of money. But it's, we're able to go, and instead of writing everything down, go to have a meter number, and punch in the numbers they entered, and move forward.
I checked other towns, I was more, I was interested in seeing if they, this is a different one, which is how hard it would be for us to come, where we could use debit cards and things like that, when customers come in.
Yeah, that's another thing we're all proud to do, is credit card, debit cards, online things, and collection service.
We go on to collection service, and we're gonna put a sign up, it's now becoming checks.
That's people on, said, collection service, yeah.
That's suspicious.
Banks are in, rolling.
When does this count tomorrow, will it be?
First or second Monday, whoever.
You know, that's really a hindrance to accounting.
We still love you.
We would like to give you a reconciled, updated cash, actual to bank, free.
But your action is gonna be done on the Friday before.
That's the prior month.
So till we see it.
Yeah, it'll be two weeks out.
It'll be two weeks out.
Right.
This year, we need to keep, what do you guys say, you need to keep an eye on money every month.
Yes, that's what we've been asking for.
Also, in addition, give you that pressure statement, every quarterly, or the past month, I can also give you what you have there in between those two weeks, as far as what we've written.
Outside.
Yeah.
So, so, we're asking, you know, every two week, periods.
Well, now, if, if she gets the receipts in a time of the matter, if she enters those receipts in, then you can get one for the prior month, and then she can give you one for the middle of the month, and it won't be active. But only if we get receipts.
And you can get it on every month, you won't ever just, mainly on just the two, every two weeks, the two big ones, and then the others you'll get every, every month after that.
But then after we get all this stuff right out, you're only gonna be once upon a time.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, and you won't see.
We're gonna be there every week.
So what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with this information? What are we gonna do with this information, is this gonna be our base document for establishing the new budget?
Yes.
So we're saying, we'd like to have this, essentially, we are budget.
Well, not necessarily.
The guidelines for the budget, in terms of categories, you're going through your different accounting categories.
That's on your birth page today, Public Works. And you'll see, let's see here, I'm gonna go a second there. You'll see electricity, public service company, sixteen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, okay? We know that utility rates aren't gonna go down.
Right.
So we're gonna have to actually bump that number a certain percentage to make sure we cover our expense under electricity for this fiscal year.
Well, I think everything's gonna go up, as you're saying.
I'm gonna wonder this, and I know this is an act, but I mean, if you weatherize some of this weather, or even if you weatherize that back with. I mean, we're pulling outside with that.
Yeah, and things that we're looking at, too, on that electricity, that's actually two meters, and we're looking at the cost effectiveness of turning that into one meter, and see if it would save us any money, you know, if the cost of changing one, would it, is the cost effective on that, so. So, you're gonna save more effort to try to save money for the people of town. And that means digging under, putting under rocks, and then around for corners.
And because we have this kind of detailed information, we can do it now.
Right, right.
You know, one of the recurring costs we see is that, you know, cord supplies getting ridiculous, you know, so we're gonna say.
It's a small number, but you keep adding that additional cost.
So we're gonna say, okay, what do we buy in there that we can buy cheaper?
What was that reference?
Oh, like on cord supplies. We're spending a lot of money on cord supplies, we have to be down for a lot of that, but we're, it's not free, we're paying for that. So we bought a lot of paper towels, a lot of certain things, we need to identify what we can spend the most of them, and find the vendor that gives us the best price, and buy and bulk, and do stuff like that, and.
If you've been buying, been buying less and more, and buy and keep it in one location, to ask the department, see if they're just gonna check that. But one thing, one thing though, I wanna really say is that, yes, all this is wonderful, I want us to definitely stay wholesome, but at one time, we gotta start thinking about bringing in revenue. To help bring in revenue, get this town going on the positive side, because of all these other places that I look at, yeah, you could be tight, you could be, but your buildings, it's gonna fall again, and since I deal with tourism, we gotta start, this is what we thought, that second thought process I have is bringing in revenue, making, just get some.
Off the record, he wants to build the water rates.
Infrastructure is a must, but the thing about it is, is this, we gotta start looking at bringing in tourism dollars.
How?
You cut this down to nothing, you're still, you're gonna just keep going down and down, we gotta start looking at.
Well, how are we gonna do that, though, what is your first recommendation?
We do gotta still clean up a lot of things, because there's a lot of money still laying around, we don't even know where to.
First process is get budgets.
There's a lot of.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a town hall meeting this summer.
Well, now, town hall meeting would be good.
Okay, let's get back to one at a time, one at a time.
We are in the middle of a hot pot for tourism here, and we have nothing to offer them, or nothing. And most of the companies that I am getting, is like, California, it's like a ghost town, the buildings are, you know, dilapidated, nobody is taking care of them. I'm getting this, I'm getting this, and people out of town that travel through here, and they say, what's happening?
I've been, I've been here for thirteen years, and, but yeah, I'm on the positive side.
I wanna bring the town up, you know, I wanna put things down there, up here.
You're rating the dollars, it'll take care of itself. We get this type.
Yeah, I'm gonna build it.
What?
Your turn. Okay, Don, your turn.
All right, you know, we have a lot of businesses around this town. Now, we tried to pass a sales tax increase a long time ago, which was.
Severely dismissed.
It's gonna be temporary, but it was permanent, okay? Now, people from all over, vitamins, the grocery store, the lumberyard, if we raise that sales tax to one cent, permanent, other people would be helping us pay the bills instead of just putting it on the lottery.
Yeah, and.
Now, we don't leave it in the lottery.
Let me go down, and keep getting lumberyard, we don't get sales tax.
Right, and just, just.
So we're bringing things outside of the limits.
The grocery store probably is a big one.
One thing we're talking about here is. One thing we're talking about here is to look at all our options. Annexation, improving the looks of town, uh, different grants to do things. We're going to be looking at multiple things to do to, to make the town better, generate more revenue, to make it look more attractive, all kinds of things. So, and that's going to be a process that we'll be going through like we're going through this budget process right now of identifying what we've got, where we want to go, and how to get there. And that's part of what we call strategic planning in those town hall meetings that we'll end up having in the future. We'll bring everybody in town to work together, put those ideas together, and have that comprehensive plan that we can all work on and kind of can.
Well, I, I think for, for, uh, excuse me, I think for tourism dollars, you have to have something to offer. Like, what, what are we going to offer for tourism? But, I mean, are we just going to have a big facade up downtown that has nothing behind it and it looks pretty? You know, are, are we going to have a business? Are we going to have a business?
That's why we're having town hall meetings.
Because I haven't seen, honestly, I mean, you know, for all the tourism there is around here, I haven't heard anybody say they want to put in a business here, or if they do, they go belly up. So why, you know, are we addressing these issues? Are we taking a look at that?
We're going to do that.
Okay.
I know this is a bit of a cute thing, and I know that we're a small town and there might be opposition, but when, when you look around and you look at different states and, and how small the towns have like grown big, they usually offer one big thing, like first Monday has people come in by the thousands. They don't get paid sales tax or, or tax. If you live in the city, you don't pay your land taxes to go to your school. The first Monday pays for that. Sturgis, which is a huge motorcycle, not that I would recommend, thousands of bike owners, like, from all over the country. But it brings in thousands and thousands of dollars. Now, the thing is, is when you have that many people coming into your town for one month, you're trading out your, your... Quiet, everything gets crazy for a couple of weeks out of the month, but you're giving your sales tax, it's feeding your community. Um, I, I, I really like to look at green things. I mean, I've met a couple of people, um, went to classes on aquaponics. Um, if you can get an investment in town to where, you know, you have these greenhouses with, you know, green, there's your jobs. There's more money coming in or, or supplied by, anyways, uh, people that hire you, or a veterans center, and a hospital. So, I mean, you're kind of limited.
I'll tell you, what, what I've experienced here, this is where the money is that we just, we, we... Paragliders, triathlon trainers, joggers, hikers, four-wheelers, motorcycles, car clubs. They're out there.
Yeah.
One thing that, uh, real quick on Don's deal, even like when we was talking about, oh, you'd be surprised, these little kids are bringing ten, twenty dollars to buy junk and on top of getting in. And at the beginning of the swimming pool meeting, we talked about, well, raising it, well, three fifty is probably a pretty good price, but you know, they got money. You don't see a market, but I'm telling you, they got money.
Okay, that might be the one thing here.
They need to get all the sales tax, all the businesses.
And that plus vendors are coming from out of that.
That's right.
Uh, so let's find out item number five. And are we three women led here right now? We're going to...
Are we paying no taxes or no...
Yeah, we're paying money right now. So, um, under this business, technically, we're going to have a town meeting. Are you saying you want to schedule a town hall meeting?
Yeah.
I think we should.
Oh, I think so.
Put it in there for a couple of weeks before.
Okay, but you do have new business, okay? And that is an O M R app needs to be passed with public works here.
Okay.
That's a copy.
And this is for billing and to be our legal deed angle, right?
Before you forget about the town hall, where would you hold it?
We could hold it here. We could have it at the senior citizen center.
If it keeps getting bigger and bigger.
Yeah, I mean, we can start out here, see what it's like, but you're going to have multiple. You know, you're not going to go and do this.
Stay here, get over road quick.
It's cool.
We hope.
It's cool cafeteria.
It goes to cool cafeteria, you know?
I have to pack this one.
So, this idea...
Don't do it until we get a budget final.
So, what goes on last idea until the next meeting?
Yeah, let's go to state court right now.
Right, town hall, I'm sure.
Okay, so under this business, as we weren't aware of this, and I mean beforehand, uh, I made a motion to authorize Joanne, uh, Guthrie, showing, showing my age here, to be our preferred authorized agent for O M R.
So is O M R?
As a local municipal retirement fund.
They have to have it. They're, they should give me a current pension.
Any more discussion? Round case, we'll have a vote.
Okay, Bailey?
Yes.
Copper?
Yes.
Yes.
Any more new business?
I just want to ask, at the last meeting, y'all talked about getting the employees, possibly getting them direct deposit, did y'all look into that or do anything like that? I think a lot of them like to have direct deposits.
We've already talked about that. As long as this place up here agrees.
Yeah, we just need to look at logistics and, and make sure we're good.
We've already talked about the, the bank down here that you use, they, they can handle direct deposits. So it's, in our system already handles direct deposits, so it's just a matter of you saying, "Yeah," we can handle it.
Is that, huh? Is that included billing? Like, if, if we were to set up?
Any more new business? Now, board member comments? I just want to sound happy, so I'm like, wow, I'm prepared, I want to build it right.
Even just great on this, obviously. Well, I know this weekend, there's a big area, full house of paragliders. That cabin that sits at the very top of Buffalo Mountain was sold this year for seven hundred something, I mean, big money. And the guy that owns that, that did use, well, the guy that owns it now, he is a teacher for paragliding and he wants to really promote that. And, um, but I mean, there's, there's just all kinds of, tomorrow, yes, you know, it's going to be valley, and I'll be cooking my beef and making the heat hot dogs. And what I hear is you are gliders.
The Tallahassee airport is the number one destination for fixed wing gliders in the central, south central United States in the wintertime. Because they don't have to...
I tell you, we've got a lot of...
There's things here, there's a lot of things here.
But we have to, um...
Oklahoma tourism says that Tallahassee is the number one spot.
Do you know, that, that, five years ago, that Tallahassee is the number one, that's like number five, but it's still, in the fall, it's still the number, this number here is what brings them here.
Will the, will the Chamber of Commerce help us keep people on, uh, you know, like, for example, one of the things that I worry about when you bring in people on line is, uh, you know, not everybody's going to stay at your place, your place will fill up. But if they go down there to the motel, they'll jack the prices up as high as you're willing, that pink toilet they got in there and that carpet that they had in their place.
I, I do know that, I was approached by Vera and she was, was sort of a champion, the town hasn't made letters yet. And, um, but she did, she told me the other day when I was working back here, she's really excited about helping, working with the town. And I told her I would give her and the Chamber, and we put projects together, but there's, so...
You know, so, you know, there's, uh, for, for example, I mean, because right now, things are kind of slim pickings. You know, these little restaurants, oh, they get mad if there's a restaurant opens across the street or something. You know, they want to be the only one in town, you know, Pam wants to be the only restaurant in town or whatever. Or the donut shop wants to be the only donut shop in town. And, and I don't know how we're ever going to...
The kitchen's good and strong.
But if you look at how many hotels and then records we have in town, we actually have a really nice show showing. And there, there are businesses that are making money. You can tell that by how they fix themselves up, how they repair themselves, how the outside is packed. They have pride.
Let me, let me, let me, find something to, we, we sit there and we want to talk about the negatives of Tallahassee.
Right.
But what we don't realize is got a lot more than we've realized. Has anybody ever been to Hollis, Oklahoma?
Where?
Hollis, Oklahoma, county seat, three thousand people. I went there on Sunday, threw there on Sunday, wasn't like the restaurant open anywhere. They don't have near what we've got at twelve hundred. If you think about it, we've got five, six restaurants.
Is that what we've got, twelve hundred?
Yeah, that, actually, that one. We've got five or six restaurants. We've got barbecue, we've got Mexican, we've got pan, we've got bell, we've got southerly, you know, and plus we've got other. When I was growing up, we didn't have twenty-four hour restaurants.
And we got a bar.
And now we've got two.
And we've got a bar now.
You know, uh, we have a lot more than people think we have. We just want to dwell on the negatives. And then we do have a lot of positives compared to other towns. Look at Hartshorn, twice our size. Would you rather live in Hartshorn or Tallahassee? That's right. You know, let's look at Eaton or Eaton, three times bigger than Tallahassee. What have they got to offer? Okay, you see what I'm saying?
We got the eyes, five street highways coming into this town.
Five highways coming to this town. We have got a lot more positives than we do negatives. We have to dwell on those positives. We're working on the negatives, don't get me wrong, but we need to promote those positives even more. One thing, one thing that Essex and I talked about and we discussed, we've got the prettiest lake you've ever seen in your life out here in Scarlet Lake. Okay, what a cedar made out over us. Just a little development around it.
Biggest bass record.
Well, and then we developed that. In fact, I bought, I bought a lot. And two, uh, two thousand twelve and last year, they stopped our wave of hybrid bass.
Well, who owns the land around the lake?
The city does most of it.
Well, then why doesn't the city put in an RV plant?
That's what I had talked about a little bit recently.
Well, years ago, the park out there used to be really nice.
Hey, our breeders are looking for good quality license that they can get a deal.
So, so you see, things are happening, guys.
Yeah, they are.
Of course, good things are happening.
What, what I, you know, what's at the crux of everything I'm saying is, it takes the town pulling together and having, you know, some kind of investment. Well, it's all right to think about what's going to impact you individually, but do you have investment in your community and in your town so that you can be cooperative rather than just thinking about, is this going to be competition for me? Am I going to lose ten dollars or, you know, that kind of stuff? And I don't know how you do that on the surface without getting some kind of real camaraderie established between existing businesses and, you know, what, what our vision is for the town building it. Because, I mean, there's no doubt about it, this is a beautiful area, the touristry is here, it could be, I was almost done, because it could be great. But, you know...
There's nothing to be built in there.
Yeah, it could be kicked, you know what? And, uh, so I, I, I'm all in favor of that. I, I drive into this town every time I have to go outside and I look down here and I just think, oh, what a beautiful, how lucky am I to live where this is so beautiful?
One more thing on our town hall meetings, why don't you consider bringing the town hall meeting and bring all the businesses in?
I'm inviting all the businesses in.
All the businesses.
That's true.
Bring them in, and let's...
These people here can do everything.
Yeah.
Okay, we have in our ordinances, maybe it's only commission, that doesn't exist. We have in our ordinances, an airport over here, the W six, and we've got people that want to be involved in him, and we don't want to, are going to ask.
That's discussed at the town hall meeting.
So there's all kinds of things, and let's, you know, just look around, look at the EMS building they got.
Oh, yeah.
Second to none. Every town would be thrilled to have that building.
We need a town hall like that.
We're fixing that, uh, twelve, uh, ten thousand five hundred foot building next door over here. That's going to be second to none. Yeah. But things, things are happening with this, with the energy and, and excitement of the public are going to happen.
So when are we going to have our, um, town hall?
We'll probably do it next meeting if he says we can. You said we can't do town hall, we gotta vote with them.
I, I wouldn't get it. I wouldn't get through that budget.
They can schedule it at twenty meetings.
All right, no more board member comments?
No.
Don, want to go to eight?
Yes, I second right now.
Uh, number eight, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Who second's that motion? Do we need any discussion on this to talk about anything? Do we need to call for a vote?
We have to.
Vote.
We're going to start having snacks.
Yes.
I want to take like that now.
Setting up some RBs.
Set that sucker in the corner over here.
Said that people scheduled to come in there, use, to make, to sell products, they all were good, they made a lot of money. And then FEMA, when they had that hurricane down, that FEMA came in and put up...